Cogswell Plaza, we're going to turn on the Wi-Fi. You're all welcome to walk over and the meeting's not going to start until 7:00. If you don't want to do it... What are we doing there?
It says 6:00.
Right.
It hasn't changed. On the calendar it said 6:00.
Right, it says 6:00, but it says 6:00 we're going over to Cogswell Plaza.
Right, and then the action starts at 7:15, right?
Correct.
The agenda, oral communication starts at 7:00. And then around 7:15 we'll probably start the Maybell thing if that's what people are here for.
If you want to come for a walk with us, you're welcome.
The Maybell Agenda Item.
The Maybell Agenda Item.
So what are you doing in Cogswell Plaza?
We're turning on the Wi-Fi. So you'll have Wi-Fi in Cogswell Plaza.
Wi-Fi in Cogswell, and it's a cloud-based.
(inaudible) Councilmember Niss.
Councilmember Price. Mayor Scharf.
Present.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shepard.
Here.
Eight present.
All right, our first order is oral communications. You'll have three minutes, and our first speaker is Kevin Hauck, to be followed by Aram James.
Thank you. I have a question regarding a discrepancy in some of the financials that I've found in the public record. We know from the Maybell debate before that the city had committed about $5.8 million to support Pahc's acquisition of the property, in $3.2 million and then later another $2.6 million loan. However, in the Pahc's application to the Tax Credit Allocation Committee included is a letter from the city to Ms. Gonzalez stating that the city council has approved funding commitment totaling $7.3220 to the Pahc. So there's about a million and a half discrepancy there, and I'm wondering where did it come from? Is this something, I don't believe it was in the public record. Is it there and we just didn't find it? Or did, you know, was it the wrong number sent to the Tax Credit Allocation Committee? So I'd like that issue addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Aram James, to be followed by Chuck Jagoda.
Just wanted to thank five members of the city council. Gail Price, Karen Holman, Greg Schmidt, Pat Burt, and Mark Berman for truly believing in the democratic process. Each of the council members that I've mentioned participated openly in discussions with the community cooperation team, some as far back as two years ago, some came when we invited them to speak at our Candidates Sunday events. Whatever way you voted, that's okay, but at least you were each willing to meet with us. Sadly, the mayor, Nancy Shepard, Liz Niss, and Larry Klein didn't take the opportunity to engage us in an open discussion. So that leaves me at least with the sense that we didn't really have participatory democracy. You know, and as to the five I mentioned, we got two votes against the ban and three in support of the ban, and I blame myself that we didn't get all five. We didn't do a good enough job of convincing you maybe of the compelling nature of our arguments. It's kind of like when I was trying cases on a regular basis. Hey, if I didn't do my job and the jury came back with a verdict that was contrary to my personal belief, nobody to blame but myself. I also wanted to talk about the way in which the meeting was carried out. Robert Norris from Santa Cruz, who I invited to come up here, is sort of legendary in First Amendment circles, and I for a very long time thought that it was ludicrous that we allow protocol to trump the First Amendment and that the city council can have ceremonial celebrations where they allow clapping and all sorts of stuff, but then when it's somebody that might have a contrarian view to the conventional wisdom of the day, all of a sudden we can't clap. So I applaud Robert Norris from Santa Cruz for that. In any event, we'll have some more discussions on the First Amendment. I recommend to everybody that they pick up a copy of Freedom for the Thoughts We Hate by the legendary journalist Anthony Lewis, or Make No Law: The Sullivan Case and the First Amendment, also by Anthony Lewis, and of course, the author of the great Gideon Trumpet on why we have public defenders in this country for indigent individuals. Okay, we'll talk later this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Chuck Jagoda, to be followed by Tim Gray.
Good evening, members of the city council. I wanted to thank the members Mark Berman and Karen Holman who voted against the vehicle habitation ban the other night, and welcome the call on the part of the city council and the city manager for an effort, a serious effort, to end poverty and homelessness in Palo Alto. The InVision Plan has hope, I find. Mila, who is preparing the plan, is open to input from homeless people and homeless advocates, and that's a very good sign, very forward-thinking, very hopeful. And I'd just like to say, as I said the other night, there's really no connection between enhanced services and taking away services like showers. People are concerned about the sanitation at Coverley, I would think would be up in arms against the closing of the showers, but that hasn't happened. And again, enhanced means added to services. So when you take away showers and take away vehicles that shelter people, that's not really enhanced. That's kind of a new speak from 1984 where you call it one thing and it's really the exact 180-degree opposite of that. That's what it reminds me of. But anyway, we have a hopeful new beginning here, and I'm very grateful. I sent a letter to you all asking that we try to be encouraging of new ideas, not immediately find reasons why they can't be done. There was a little too much of that the other night at this meeting, I thought, and Gail Price was kind enough to reply that she agreed with this effort, and I hope that the rest of you will as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Timothy Gray.
Mayor and city council members, my name is Timothy Gray and I live in Charleston Meadows. I have some information that requires the urgent attention of the city. Now, this does not address the merits of the Maybell project, but it does involve an administrative process related to the Maybell project. In looking at the merits of Palo Alto Housing Corporation's plans for the Maybell project, I learned that the zoning that is required for the product's, the project's key funding source, has never been in place, and the application contains a major misrepresentation by the developer and the city staff. The zoning change would have went into effect July 31st. However, the city's referendum rules state that after a referendum is received, such ordinances shall be suspended and inoperative. This means that the zoning change is not in effect until it is permanently rejected by the voters or allowed to be placed into law. Suspended and inoperative means that the zoning is now not law, or for that matter, the land was never rezoned. One of the key documents of the application to the state was a certified statement issued by the city that the zoning to be used in the building of the project is in fact in place. This material representation needs to be corrected as soon as possible. This is a fraudulent information that the developer has presented to the State Tax Credit Allocation Committee, and failure to immediately contact the state with corrective written documentation will make you all co-conspirators to a fraudulent misrepresentation. I'm presenting this so that corrective action can be taken. Now that you've been put on notice, without immediate written correction, you will all be co-conspirators to a fraudulent act. I don't want to make light of a very serious situation, but I don't think most of you would look good in stripes. Well, the exception might be Mayor Scharf and Larry Klein. Seriously, we have to take corrective action to start with a clean slate and present a project for all the funding supplements with the support of the community. I will be forwarding this information to Gina Ferguson at the State of California Tax Credit Allocation Committee and the compliance unit. It will review the fraudulent misrepresentation with the state attorney general's office. I offer this with the hope of a positive outcome that includes a fresh start with the high-integrity conversations that meets the needs of the entire community.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to our action item. Do we have a staff presentation?
Thank you, Mayor Scharf. City Attorney Molly Stumpf, we will introduce the item. We are here this evening on Agenda Item Two to assist the council in discharging its duty under Palo Alto Charter Article 6, Section 3, which calls for the council to take one of two actions in response to the receipt of sufficient signatures on a referendum of a council legislative action. The council is required under the charter to reconsider the legislative action that has been subject to a sufficient number of signatures and either repeal it or submit the question of approval or rejection of the legislative action to the electorate at the next general municipal election or a special election, a minimum of 88 days hence. Before you tonight are two referenda. The first referendum, which is described in detail in the staff report, is a referendum of the council's adoption of an ordinance adopting a planned community overlay zone for the Maybell property. The staff is making no recommendation with respect to a decision on that referenda. The item is before the council for its discretion as a policy matter to determine whether to repeal that ordinance or to place it on the ballot and which election the council would like to do that for is the second discretionary item for you this evening if you choose to do that. The second referendum that is before you is a referendum amended, of a resolution amending the land use map of the Palo Alto Comprehensive Plan. And as stated in the staff report that's before you tonight, the staff is making a recommendation on this item. The staff recommends that the council repeal the resolution amending the Comprehensive Plan for the following reason. The amendment to the Com Plan is not determinative of the housing project, senior housing project that is proposed for the Maybell property. It will not be determinative of that project either way, and therefore the council can avoid the expense of an election on the Com Plan item by exercising its discretion to go ahead and grant the relief that's requested by the signatories on the referendum and repeal that resolution. We're happy to answer questions about that item. The council also does have the option, of course, to decline to do that and to place the item before the voters for their determination. We've asked the clerk to prepare a couple of informational slides for the council and the public. Madam Clerk, you want to show us the schedule? So this is an election schedule for the first possibility of an election should the council choose to place one or both of these referenda on the ballot. And this is for the November 2013 election. August 8th, which is this evening, the council would determine the election date and pass a resolution calling the election. August 9th is the last legal day to forward that resolution to the county board of supervisors to call that election for November 5th. That does comply with the 88-day requirement in-state election law. We then have two dates that are set by the county registrar of voters that would apply to this November 5th, 2013 election. The registrar has informed us that August 16th, 2013, would be the due date for direct arguments for and against a ballot measure, and August 23rd would be the due date for rebuttal arguments and for the city attorney's impartial analysis of a measure. The registrar of voters has not set these two dates for the subsequent elections that you could consider tonight. In other words, should you choose to place one or both matters on the June or November 2014 election, we don't have these due dates yet for arguments for or against. They're set by the county registrar as the election gets closer, and if you choose to use any, either of those 2014 election dates, we will come back to you when the dates are available and inform you of those dates. Madam Clerk, you want to show us the next slide? We do have some general information for you, estimates provided by the county registrar of voters for the costs of the various elections that are options for the council this evening. So we are showing the registrar of voters' estimated costs, the city clerk's costs, and then a total column adding those two items together for the November 5th, 2013 special election for the primary in June of 2014 and the general municipal election in November of 2014. We've also included a notation for a standalone all-male ballot, which is a legal option that has not been used before in Palo Alto. This chart shows you the cost for two measures, and this again is an estimate that the registrar of voters has provided to the clerk. We also can show you the estimates for one measure if you choose to put one measure before the voters and adopt the other. Again, the registrar of voters' cost, the city clerk's cost, and the total there for those same groups of elections. We are available to answer any questions the council may have.
Finished. Thank you. So now we'll turn to oral communication on this matter. We have a number of speakers, so we're going to have two minutes. We do have one group of five speakers that have pooled together, and so under our rules they get 10 minutes. And Candace Gonzalez is our first speaker, who have 10 minutes, to be followed by Michael Moyer.
Thank you, Mayor Scharf and city council members. I'm Candace Gonzalez, the executive director of the Palo Alto Housing Corporation. First, thank you once again for unanimously approving our Maybell Senior Housing Project. Palo Alto Housing Corporation continues to wholeheartedly believe that we have an inherently good project that will be a true benefit to our community. Under the PC zone, you were able to make countless changes to our project for the benefit of the neighborhood beyond the public benefit of affordable senior housing, including requiring us to move all the drivings on Maybell to the back and to spend up to $200,000 on expedited improvements to Maybell and Climo for bike and pedestrian safety. Under the PC zone, you are able to restrict the 60 units to affordable housing in perpetuity, which could not be done with conventional zoning. Almost all, if not all, senior housing in Palo Alto exists under PC zones. If and when this goes to the ballot, we are confident that the majority of the community will support housing for our lower-income seniors and support your unanimous decision. Delaying this project would be a disservice to our lower-income seniors who need housing now. The opponents of this project initiated the referendum that is directly costing the need for an election. If it were up to us, there would be no election because we believe in the council's decision and process. Therefore, we are requesting that you put this referendum on the ballot at the earliest possible election, which is November 5th, 2013. Our request is within the city's normal practice. One of our supporters did some research for us recently using reliable sources like the Santa Clara County Registrar of Voters and found that between 2008 and 2012, there were nine ballot measures that the city council or the Palo Alto Unified School District dealt with. Of this nine, five were set for a primary election and four were set at a special election, but all nine elections were scheduled between three to four months after the decision was made to place them on the ballot. With this in mind, thank you for your consideration, and I want to thank all of our supporters who are in the audience as well.
Thank you. Michael Moyer.
Hi, I'm Michael Moyer. I live at 646 Ferramid in Green Acres, one neighborhood. And over the last 20 years, it's been shocking to watch the city of Palo Alto government ban or develop an interest in pursuing high-density urbanization, doing whatever it takes, without apparent regard for legal or political boundaries of the resulting long-term costs and effects on Palo Alto's residents. My first exposure to this came during the Hyatt Cabana fight wherein one of your city council members lectured me on the, for three hours, on just how committed the city was to high-density urbanization and what it was willing to do, and they underscored that by suing all of our individual residents to intimidate us and force access. They did it improperly in the city's connivance, and eventually they were forced to drop the suit. The second came during the infamous Arbor Real development, and we have a monument to where this all leads down there in terms of a sort of textbook monstrosity of high-density development associated traffic, parking, and infrastructure expenses, and the third's been Maybell. We've been expecting it. The city's participation in the Maybell scheme raises a serious conflict of interest and governmental practice concerns. Its fiscal involvement in the scheme before its taxpaying voters had a say in it, renders the city unable to discuss or perceive with anything approximating, in my mind, a responsible, objective manner of this issue. The city's invested a proactive party in this development scheme in changing the existing residential zoning regulations. Zoning that was essential to our purchase decision when we bought our homes in our neighborhoods is a betrayal of almost astonishing breathtaking proportions. City's ongoing accommodation of various disastrous PC developments is old, old news, but that the city has become fiscally involved in such a development effort is new. The city itself is engaged in using the PC loophole to undermine its own residential property on its interest in desired quality of life standards. In the haste the city is showing and accommodating the developer to push this matter to completion, including considering holding a special election burden taxpayers with a significant decrease in election costs for the fiscal benefit, the financial benefit, the developer betrays obvious hopes of rushing to a decision before even more substantial opposition has time to emerge. Hope you'll basically reject what we know would be a continuation of this process by putting this on the early ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Schultz, to be followed by John Elman.
I'm Ken Schultz. I live in Green Acres II, and I'm one of the infamous people whose name is at the head of the petitions. That being said, I'm in favor of senior housing, and I'm in favor of senior housing pretty much as it was proposed. What I'm not in favor of is that I don't feel the city council or PAC went far enough in protecting the neighborhood. It went partway, and I thank you for that, but I think there are things, I know there are things that could have been done that would have satisfied PAC's need for income to build the senior project that would have reduced the impact on the community. I think we came very close, or may have come very close, to having meaningful negotiations the weekend before the final decision. I think some things were proposed then that if they'd been accepted, we probably wouldn't be here now, and everybody could have proceeded on schedule. So what I propose is, is that the city council decide to rescind their decisions and have no special election for the following purpose. The goals are to get senior housing and to protect the neighborhood. I see them as equal, or should have equal weight, and I think we should return negotiations, the neighborhood, the city council, and Palo Alto Housing Corporation as quickly as possible, but this time they should be substantive negotiations, meaning that everybody is committed to those goals. I think if we do this, we can get to a resolution and move forward quickly at minimum expense to Palo Alto Housing Corporation and with no special election and the expense associated with that. That way, we can put our resources into projects, not lawyers, not consultants. I think this is expected by the electorate. So for the neighborhood, this means addressing traffic concerns and the character of the development of the private sector, and it's really the private sector that was the problem, in my opinion. I think negotiations almost worked. I'm told that somebody from the neighborhood proposed seven or eight houses. I think that could have been done at the same financial benefit to Palo Alto Housing Corporation, but it was rejected. I think in retrospect, this was a poor move. So I propose reverse the decision, bring in a mediator, let's sit down and talk, and let's mean it this time. If you can't do that, then just wait to the next scheduled election, because that will, it's not as good, but it'll still leave enough time in the future that people will be motivated to negotiate, although the neighborhood might not be as motivated to negotiate. If you hold a special election, everybody's going to keep on fighting, everybody's going to hire lawyers, everybody's going to continue demeaning each other, and it could blow up in either side's face, and it might not look so good at the next elections either. So let's cancel this thing, get back to negotiation, let's get senior housing, let's protect the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. John Elman.
Okay, you need to tell, you turned it off too quickly. I don't see John.
All right. Bob Moss, to be followed by Tim Gray.
Thank you, Mayor Scharf and council members. Well, of course, I would prefer that you just, we see in both ordinances and save a lot of time and money and allow the construction on the site to go under the existing zoning, which would do something very rare, would actually comply with the Comprehensive Plan, something that we rarely see around here nowadays. I'm not going to go into all of the Comprehensive Plan policies and programs that this particular PC violates, but I'll just mention a couple of them. You're supposed to be consistent between R1 and low-density residential and whatever's built next to it. A development with 54.5 units per acre, which is more than the maximum that's allowed under standing zoning, directly adjacent to R1 is not consistent or compliant. And I noticed a few oddities. There's a letter that was sent on June 18th to the Housing Corporation by Tim Wong saying the council's approved funding of $7,320,220. I only recall you're formally approving once $5.8 million back in March. Where'd the other $1.5 million come from? Then there's a letter that was sent on June 26th by Tim Wong to the tax group saying that the zoning is as approved. That was two days before the second reading and 32 days before the zoning could have become effective. Then I've noticed some things the Housing Corporation's done which are strange. They talk about the site being at one point .25 miles, another time .17 miles from El Camino. So I got the assessor's maps and I measured the actual distance. It's actually 1,330 feet to El Camino, or a little over a quarter of a mile, not .17. Finally, in your mitigating the declaration, you said there were no hazards, but there are in fact hazards in the soil, and the seller agreed that they had to spend as much as $225,000 to mitigate it. I think you have a real problem here.
Tim Gray, to be followed by Soror Ibn Azajad.
Mayor and city council members, hi, my name is Timothy Gray and I live in Charleston Meadows. My three children attend school in the area impacted by the Maybell development. Let's work together to build low-income senior housing without throwing out all the protections that we have set up in the Comprehensive Plan. There is the opportunity to build senior housing and low-income housing under these rules that the residents of Palo Alto have agreed to. There would be no need for a special election if the zoning laws were simply followed. Yes, there would be a need to do some charitable funding, but that would be much more of an acceptable way of achieving our mutual goal of increased senior and affordable housing. The details are too great to repeat, however, the idea that building under the rules would create greater density and traffic is simply not true, and that is a debunked falsehood that has been used to seduce fair-minded citizens. Please understand that this is a stand for the future of Palo Alto, where the development honors the Comprehensive Plan and zoning that has served to preserve Palo Alto as a very desirable place to live. This is not about one development in Barren Park, but is about the following, following the rules that were objectively set to protect all Palo Alto residents. Beware of the steamroller of development agendas that are heading our way waving the flag of sincere, good causes like senior housing, when in fact, they are wolves in sheep's clothing with a development agenda. We don't have to destroy our quality of life in the name of progress. We can work together with high-integrity communications to solve our collective needs. What we have observed is manipulation and forcing of a high-density configuration on a neighborhood that has already had bottleneck traffic and that is endangering children. I'll just say, thank you for, in advance, for going back to the very principles that have been followed in creating our great town.
Thank you. Soror Ibn Azajad, to be followed by- Soror Ibn Azajad to be followed by Laszlo Toks.
I recently had the opportunity to look at the PHC tax credit application that's dated July 5th, 2013, and appears on the treasurer's, California treasurer's website. I ran into a few things that I couldn't understand, so I thought I'd just bring a few of them tonight in the two minutes. In the 46 pages of this application, there was not a single mention of the land that PHC plans to populate with the 12 market rate houses. All the accounting was done based on the 1.1 acre that's used for the senior apartment building. Based on the accounting that's presented in the application, PHC can build the apartments just fine, using the monies from Palo Alto, Santa Clara County, and other sources. There is even a table for their 15-year cash flow projection that looks totally balanced and solid. So if the market rate houses are required for this senior apartment building, how come the funds associated with the development of the market rate housing, how come that's not included? Second, many people all along have questioned the viability, the suitability of this site for seniors, majority of whom don't have cars, we're told. Well, PHC seems to be having the same kind of problem, when, if you look at page 35 of the application, they're struggling to identify a reasonable grocery store and medical clinic within a reasonable distance. When they're asked for a medical clinic or hospital, they specify Planned Parenthood, and they say the distance is nine tenths of a mile from the Maybell Orchard. With the nine tenths, if they put the nine tenths of a mile, they fall within the one-mile distance, that's highly, gets them a lot of points. Google Maps says one and a half miles. If you're in a helicopter, I think it's nine tenths of a mile. And up there on that slide, please look, it's a very curious thing, that Whole Foods Market is indicated as the grocery store of the senior apartment building, and PHC again lowballs the distance. Thank you.
Thank you. Laszlo Toks to be followed by Cheryl Lilienstein.
Mr. Mayor and the city council, last year, you have decided to support the Palo Alto Housing Committee proposal to construct 75-unit development on Maybell, knowing that this will require rezoning of the property. Since then, you proceeded with an unwavering drive to push through the rezoning while claiming impartiality in the decision-making. Since May and June of this year, when the neighborhood learned about this project, we provided plenty of reasons to discourage you from carrying out the rezoning. You pushed it through anyhow. Your move created a citywide opposition to such rezoning of a residential property for high-density, high-rise development, partly for the developer's benefit. Now you are facing two referenda, a lawsuit, and with the most recently uncovered potentially fraudulent actions, you may face a second lawsuit, too. With the citywide deep-seated resentment against the number of recently approved misguided and generally disliked developments throughout the city, the chiny is getting out of the battle, which will make your future dealing and election positions very uncomfortable for you. With the unavoidable delays and potential defeat at the polls, you got yourself into a corner where the only sensible way out with any level of respectability is either to rescind the rezoning or to have the Palo Alto Housing Committee withdraw their application. There are better ways to spend the hundreds of thousands of taxpayers' money than for the election costs and legal expenses for the Palo Alto Housing Committee's expensive campaign for consultants and political advisors.
Thank you. Cheryl Lilienstein to be followed by Margot Davis.
I'm Cheryl Lilienstein. I live in Barren Park, and I have to say, I feel really sad about standing here again. I went through the application that the Palo Alto Housing Corporation sent to the tax board, and I find a timeline, which I would have liked to have put up there, which shows that the city was committed to this project prior to the rezoning. You've been given that information by at least five previous speakers, so I don't think I need to go over it again. But what it says to me is that the city never intended to do anything but rezone, once they loaned the Palo Alto Housing Corporation the first $3.2 million and then maybe the $7.3 million that shows up in the report, and I, too, would like to know about that money, and that it really appears that it was a done deal way before the public had any knowledge of it. So once, it looks to us like, once the city loaned this money, they became business partners to the Palo Alto Housing Corporation and committed to rezoning for the sake of this project, no matter what the citizen concerns might be. The city never considered other options, even though the neighborhood wanted to offer them, and you defended this investment by accepting bad data and asserting that the neighborhood concerns about safety, suitability, traffic, and high-density zoning in residential neighborhoods was, you know, just not real. That's what you tried to tell us, it's not real, okay? It was a done deal, and the whole hearing process, including the mayor's mediation, seemed to us to be a charade. Thank you.
Margot Davis to be followed by Kevin Houck.
I would ask.
Okay. So Kevin Houck to be followed by Kathy Eisenhardt.
I think another thing we need to be mindful of is the precedent the city is setting to developers, all developers. Reading from the editorial in the paper, it says, "Referenda should be acts of last resort for citizens. They reflect a failure of the normal processes of government and a wake-up call that there's significant discontent." I think that is extremely accurate. It's a very accurate capture of, of what we're seeing now. PHC made some decisions, such as commissioning a traffic study, which chose to ignore the presence of bikes and kids on this designated safe route to school. Now, that's a decision that didn't have to get made, and it's a decision, really, that they're paying for now. I think if the city council invests a bunch of money now to give them an election at the time and place of their choosing for a referenda that they kind of brought down on themselves with decisions that they made, it sets a terrible precedent for developers in the future looking to build in this city. Second, I think, just as a taxpayer, I think we need to look at what exactly, if we schedule an election at, a more expensive election at the time of their choosing, what are we buying? And it sounds like we're not buying a clear path to development, we're buying actually a continuation, there's still SEQA questions to answer, there's the big mess there, there's a bunch of questions that have been raised tonight about the tax credit allocation committee application and potential misrepresentations in that that are going to need to be cleared up. So even if we have the election early at greater cost to the taxpayers, we're probably right back where we started, even if it goes their way. So I urge you to do the fiscally responsible thing and also the right thing, given, given the type of outrage you've witnessed and the concerns that were ignored, and just let this thing go now, and if you do put on the election, if you do put it on the ballot, do it when it's cheapest to the taxpayers, after some of these other issues have been resolved, which would be next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kathy Eisenhardt to be followed by Jerry Underdahl.
Hello, council. Thank you for taking time once again on this issue. First of all, my, I'd like to ask you to, encourage you to rescind the Maybell rezoning and to follow the rules with regard to the comprehensive plan. Secondly, I have just a couple of points. One is, I think you should be struck by the extraordinary success of the petition drive. That was a drive that happened in the middle of the summer with a very short amount of time, and I think it's extraordinary that my neighbors and friends were able to deliver that petition, or both petitions, actually. And I think what it reflects is the tremendous support for the Maybell, the Maybell point of view in terms of, of changing the zoning around the city. I think around the city, there was, we were surprised by the amount of frustration around the city with regard to projects like Palo Alto Housing Corporation. So I think you really should be struck by, by the, by the success of that petition drive against all odds. Secondly, I think you should be impressed by the fatigue that people are feeling about the rhetoric from Palo Alto Housing Corp. and other corporate, corporate entities like them, corporate interests. You know, the traffic study was something I think most of the high school kids in Palo Alto could have done a better job on. I think there's scare tactics around, there's going to be all these houses that are going to go up there, I think if you actually look at the zoning, that's not true. There's no, they, they weren't required to give us any kind of real data about demand. So I think they, I guess, I, I think people are tired of, of special interests, whether it's CHOP Keenan or whether it's Palo Alto Housing Corp. getting special deals, I think people are sick of it around the city. And then finally, I think there's frustration around, on the one hand, the supersizing of developments like the Palo Alto Housing Corp., and on the other hand, restricting the traffic flow. So particularly where I live, which is in, in the Maybell area, you're on the one hand asking us to have these big developments, and on the other hand, you're making a Rastodaro more congested and less safe. That does not make sense. More, more houses, worse trap, worse narrowing of our roads, so that's just crazy. So just to summarize, I hope you do rescind the Maybell rezoning and save us all money, and I hope if you don't, you'll go for the November 14th election. Thanks.
Jerry Underdahl to be followed by Lydia Koo.
Hi, my name's Jerry Underdahl. I live at 534 Georgia Avenue, and I live just around the corner from the property that's concerned, and I live close enough to actually get the cards that were sent out to notify us about the, the planning commission hearings and a number of other things, which a lot of the people who are talking here, they live too far away, they didn't get the card, they were noticed. I'd like to go back to the February 13th meeting of the planning commission, when there were, prior to talking with the folks, the head of the commission asked each one, "How much ex parte communication have you had?" You know what the answer was? Three. Three telephone, anonymous telephone calls, and I called to check and said, "Hey, do they have to record emails and letters as well?" Yep. That's how much opposition there was at that point that had been expressed on this. Now, what do you thought that it was going to go through easily? But what happened is that the next day, a, on Town Square, a single poster with 17 posts set the outline for the debate that we've been having since then, and that forms the basis of much of the Maybell Action Group's action plan and what they have presented. I'd like to talk a little bit about the Maybell Action Group. As you, most of the folks who we have seen here today, I, I think I'm a different voice, as I've heard, I don't think I've heard somebody yet talk from a really local point of view. Here's my point of view. That project would be good for our neighborhood. You look at the accommodations that have been made there, it's going to be attractive. Initially, concerns were about putting traffic out on Maybell, they accommodated that. It has been improved. Now, if there were no purchase, I've got so many things, I wish I could have three, three times to talk because I've got so much to say, and I live there. If there were no purchase, where would we be? My sense is that we would be hearing bulldozers over there on Maybell already, putting up a commercial developer's vision of what you could do with the current zoning. So please, have the election, talk it out, get some support.
Thank you. Lydia Koo to be followed by David Darling.
Good evening, council members. My name is Lydia Koo. I'm alerting you to a significant corrections, to significant corrections that are needed to a June 26, 2013 letter previously submitted by the city to the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee in support of Palo Alto Housing Corporation's tax credit application. This matter should be addressed by you tonight, together with other referendum issues before you. The issuance of certificates validated the number of signatures required for each referendum petition and caused both the resolution and the ordinance to be suspended and inoperative. Fourth with, under Palo Alto City Charter, Article 6, Section 3, thus at this time, neither this resolution nor the ordinance is in effect or has any legal effect whatsoever. In reviewing the application for tax credit financing filed by the Palo Alto Housing Corporation with the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee for tax credit financing for the Maybell Orchard Senior Apartments, attached in 14, City of Palo Alto submitted a, Palo Alto Housing Corp.'s application is a verification of zoning letter dated 26, June 26, 2013, provided by the City of Palo Alto, addressed to CTCAC, prepared two days before the city council voted to adopt ordinance 5200. This letter represented to the CTCAC that when that letter was written and signed, i.e. as of June 26, the project was as proposed is zoned for the intended use complies with the general plan and conditional use requirements, if any, even though no vote had been taken adopting such zoning until two days later. This raises questions as how the author of this letter, or whoever in the city authorized it to be written, knew on June 26, two days before the June 28 adoption vote was taken, that your council would vote in favor of opting ordinance 52, 5200 two days later, unless either the outcome was predetermined or some manner of canvassing council members regarding their intended votes in violation of the Brown Act occurred before the meeting of June 28. I urge you to correct this and do the appropriate and necessary steps to avoid controversy. Thank you.
Thank you. David Darling to be followed by Joe Rolfe.
Hi, my name is Dave, and I live pretty much around the corner from the, the Maybell job site. I've never spoken before, any group this large before, so pardon me being really nervous. This whole thing, this whole action appears really like a railroad job, like the decision was made, you know, months or years ago, and it's just going through the motions and saying, "Well, here, this is the next step, you're not going, getting any choice in it", when, as residents, we really should have a choice. We've seen that the traffic study was bogus, we've seen that there are days when, when cars are packed completely solid and there are just hundreds, hundreds of bicycles trying to get through. This is going to cause a problem. We're told that a couple of hundred thousand dollars worth of paint and tape is going to make the traffic better, and I don't know how that's possible when you have these three-story monstrosities that are going to go up cheek by jowl along Maybell right on the road, so there isn't any room to widen the road there, and even if there's room there, there isn't room on other parts of the road. So I don't know how that's supposed to get addressed, just by a couple of, a little bit of money like that. So I'm not a, I'm not any kind of reactionary. I think the most radical group I belong to is the United Airlines frequent flyer miles club, but this seems like a really bad idea, and if nothing else, you should put it on the regular ballot to save people money and, and also to let us continue talking about is to try to come up with real solutions to this, rather than just, "We made up our mind last year, and you all just have to suck it up and deal." Thank you.
Thank you. Diana Rolfe, or Joe Rolfe to be followed by Diana Rolfe, sorry.
Either way is okay. The opposition to the Mayfield housing is disappointing and, in my mind, short-sighted. The referenda are discouraging and will cost the city a lot of money, but we need to put it on the ballot as soon as possible, and I feel strongly that you on the council have made a decision. Please don't back down, please put this on the ballot in November. As a practical matter, we all know the housing will be developed, and the alternatives that have been proposed of between 34 and 47 single-family houses will generate more traffic, demand more municipal services, and add additional kids to an already burdened school system. So is, I wonder, is a real senior housing complaint about sharing the neighborhood with people who are different or poor? I really want Palo Alto to be a healthy and diverse community, so please put this on the ballot and let's vote.
Diane Rolfe to be followed by John Duggan.
Diane Rolfe, 1360 Emerson Street, Palo Alto. The last time I spoke before the city council on affordable housing was in 1985. Every 28 years, I get inspired, and my husband and I spoke on the need to have senior low-cost housing as part of the Gamble Gardens, two blocks from my home, and here I am, every 28 years, I show up. I wish to encourage the development of the Maybell project of 12 single-family residences and 60 housing units for low-income seniors. and 60 housing units for low-income seniors. The vote of this issue must happen this year, or the project must, will die. How did we come to this stadsate of affairs? Number one, I'm afraid it was ignorance. Many of the referendum advocates who want to stop the development for seniors are not aware of the consequences of their actions. That, in reality, that land will be developed. Provide low-income seniors with greatly needed housing units, or we will have 34 to 46 units of single-family housing. In reality, the Maybell senior development will have far less impact on the schools, far fewer cars on the streets, far less noise and pollution than the other alternative. We really do have two choices, and the question is, which way is Palo Alto going to go? I believe that many people signed the referendum without adequate knowledge. I personally saw one man pigeonholed in front of Piazza's Market by a signature gatherer, and his one question was, "Would this cost the city of Palo Alto money?" He was told by the signature gatherer, "Absolutely not. Not one penny." I was shocked as I watched him sign. Too many citizens have forgotten the values that made us a great city. Those values are diverse community that cares about one another, and we must care about low-income seniors, just like our children, all together. Thank you.
Thank you. John Duggan, to be followed by Hugo Mortgat. Hugo Mortgat, to be followed by Susan Keen. Susan Keen? Come on up. And you'll be followed by Leve Mortgat.
Good evening. This is a first time for me, too. I've lived in this city for over 45 years and seen lots of changes. I've been very distressed lately with the amount of building and the amount of, and I would say, the lack of taste with a lot of the building and the excess traffic. I'd like to give a different view of what we could do with that property. We do not have a heritage orchard, although some of the cities around us do. I woke up the other couple of weeks ago and thinking, "Who's thinking about the environment? Where are we getting all this water to support all these additional people and houses and traffic?" I think that we owe it to ourselves and to our children and to the environment to look at a total picture of what we, how we want to be, and what do we want to build or not build. So I would love to see that 2.2 acre acres kept as a heritage orchard with maybe something really creative done with it for the community as a whole. That's what I feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Leve Mortgat, to be followed by Rachel Wright. Rachel Wright, if you want to come up. To be followed by Ron Hall.
Good evening. I was here on Monday. And that night, we learned a lot about the housing crisis in this city and in this county, and its real human effects. There was a lot of talk about finding solutions to this crisis, so I'm back. I believe this product is an excellent part of the solution. I worked on trying to develop affordable housing as part of a project with the Stanford Graduate School of Business, and I know how hard it is. There is no perfect affordable housing development. The way that they're scored by the state just makes it very difficult. But we also know that they are always opposed by the immediate neighbors, and so I think the entire city should have a chance to decide. We should support Palo Alto Housing Corporation in this incredibly difficult work. Moreover, I'd like to speak to the benefits of such housing. I've interviewed over 70 low-income people, and one of the most memorable was a wonderful woman who suffers from a severe autoimmune disease. She spent all her savings trying to treat this disease, and now she gets $850 a month of disability, and she spends all of it on rent. The stress she has trying to figure out how to get food and other necessities is something that you and I cannot imagine. She cried several times during the interview. Still, she volunteers at a social service agency in a, in a community gardening program. Housing like this would alleviate that stress that she feels and help her begin to thrive. We have to do everything we can to support our neighbors in need. As for zoning, this city needs some adjustments. Change is hard, but we can't expect to be one of the world's economic powerhouses with some of the largest corporations in the world and remain a sleepy suburb. I love the idea of the orchard, but we need people to live, we need the density. So as this change occurs, we have to support ways to keep the city diverse and accommodate all community members. Please put this on the ballot so the voters can learn more and so that they can decide.
Thank you. Ron Hall, to be followed by Lenny Malina.
Mayor City Council, thank you. Ron Hall, Channing Avenue. I was born in Palo Alto longer ago than I care to admit, and have seen definitely a lot of changes. I want to applaud the city council and its almost 50-year commitment to affordable housing. The partnership with the housing corporation has been a model across the United States, all throughout California, that is still a good model. The city and its relationship with the housing corporation has been able to develop hundreds and hundreds of low-income housing units for a cross-section of our population. It's been wonderful. Most cities would cry to even be able to get part of that. The PC zone that we have so much objection to has been the greatest vehicle that we've been able to use to keep that affordable housing in perpetuity and get what public benefit we want. Affordable housing needs to be developed in all areas of the city, residential areas, whatever. And as far as traffic, traffic is everybody's problem in the city. Everybody needs to participate in helping the traffic situation. It's not one development, it's not one property, it's not one business, it's not one neighborhood, it's everybody in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Lenny Malina, to be followed by Aram James.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Lenny Malina, and I've lived in Barron Park since 1971. I followed this project since it was first brought to the attention of our neighborhood at a community meeting sponsored by the Palo Alto Housing Corporation in September 2012. The housing corporation held two other community meetings after that, many more meetings than any for-profit developer would ever have held. I also wrote a long-ish article on the proposed rezoning for the Barron Park Association newsletter in January 2013. The newsletter goes to about 400 paid association members. Information about this project has been out in our neighborhood for a long time. I support the Maybell-Climo rezoning, and I urge you to proceed with the November election to allow the residents of Palo Alto to learn the facts and decide on the merits of the project. Thank you.
Aram James, to be followed by Jim Jerkovich.
I'm gonna slip back into discussion of the First Amendment very quickly. Is this a two-minute rule, or a two-minute and 30, or two-minute and 40? If you're gonna have a two-minute rule, then it needs to apply, because otherwise, I need to have two minutes and 40 seconds, or whatever you're letting other folks. I don't care which side of the issue is, we need to play by the rules. Somebody just made the comment, I think that's on the same side of the issue as I am, and that is, I support the project, and I would hope if you, that you don't rescind it, that you put it on the ballot this November, so we don't run the clock out for funding. But there was somebody that just made the comment that immediate neighbors always oppose these kind of projects. For at least the preponderance of my 64 years, I've lived in Barron Park. The home I live in now has been a family home since 1966, 832 Los Robos. Lived in La Colle Court before, went to what was then called Lomo Vista Elementary School, is now Juana Breones, Termon, Gunn. You know, we need to preserve the diversity in this, in Barron Park, and we need to expand that. We're at risk of losing diversity at the Buena Vista mobile homes, and now the reactionary support for lessening diversity, particularly for seniors, makes no good sense to me. So I would ask you, unless you think you haven't given this process enough time, to stick with your 9-0 vote, respect the democratic process, put it on for a popular vote, do it, like I said, so we don't run out the funding options, let's do it in November of this year, and let's all stand up for increasing the diversity in this community, and particularly for people that might not ever be able to live in Palo Alto unless we continue to pursue the beautiful low-income housing that we have in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Jerkovich, to be followed by Gene McCown.
Good evening. You know, I come here tonight almost thinking that this decision is a foregone conclusion, that there's gonna be a special election in November, given the rush that's been made to have this meeting. But I still have a little bit of hope, since the outcome may not be predetermined, as I quote one of you who was running for election earlier for the city council, and I quote their position. "The city's PC zoning process allows developers to build at a greater density than would otherwise be allowed in exchange for public benefit." Then you go on to say, "You would carefully scrutinize any changes of its use of long-term impact on quality of life in our city." However, tonight, I seem like, you know, you've turned your back on the citizens of this city, because you're now proposing developers build at much greater densities than would otherwise be allowed, through your approval of these multitude of PC-designated projects that are now happening in this city. So my message to you tonight is, there's a comprehensive plan that defines the land use for the city, why don't we enforce it? When you make a decision tonight, be careful what you ask for. If you want a special election, you'll be the ones that might be killing the opportunity to create affordable housing at this site for failing to consider other project options that fit within the mandated pre-existing zoning, and you've almost wasted $600,000 on an inspectional election to do this. If you want to see a lot of upset voters, you can choose the special election. But instead, you do have another option. You could, for example, build a senior housing project at 30 units that could be developed at a much lower cost by a developer like Habitat for Humanity, and that would allow you to do something on what a lot of the neighbors have asked for, is seven private developed homes that make it affordable and get to the density that you have today. So I think the simple solution is rescind this rezone.
Thank you. Gene McCown, to be followed by Chuck Jagoda.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf. This is an excellent project. I am on the board of the housing corporation, so let me disclose that, and I am confident that the community supports it. But given that we have this referendum, it should be put on for a vote by the entire community at the earliest ballot available, which is this coming November. And as Candace Gonzalez mentioned, that apparently is the tradition of how these types of referendums are handled, in terms of which ballot is chosen. I was in the weekend meetings that the mayor hosted before your final meeting, and during the discussions over those two days, the opponents acknowledged from those discussions the reasons why 60 units are needed to accomplish an affordable project for very low-income seniors. That conclusion was stated in the memo that they wrote and that you had in front of you before your vote. The opponents now say they support affordable senior housing, but only under existing zoning. The reality is, this 60-unit project cannot happen without the PC zone you approved, and PC zones are what have allowed senior and affordable housing to be built all over the city of Palo Alto for the last many decades. There's only one reason this election needs to happen, it's this referendum. The future of this senior housing project should not bear the significant burden of a delay to a whole, more than a year from now, to a November 2014 election. Please put this on the November 2013 ballot. Thank you.
Chuck Jagoda, to be followed by Cedric de la Boujier.
Mayor and members of the city council, I simply want to say that I think diversity is very important, and housing for low-income seniors is very important, a group of which I consider myself a member. And apparently, according to a number of the speakers, there are issues that need to be straightened out in the application process and perhaps other procedural issues, so obviously, they have to be straightened out. But you did a good thing, you made a good plan, and I think you should carry it through. Thank you.
Thank you. Cedric de la Boujier, to be followed by Aparna Anath Subramaniam.
Hi, I'm Cedric de la Boujier. I'm amazed that someone's got a more complicated name than myself. I support the Maybell project. It seems to me that there are two ways to kill this project. One would be to adopt the petition, and the other would be to put the project in limbo for a year, waiting for the next regularly scheduled election cycle. Therefore, I'm here to urge you to place the matter on the November 5 special election. It's regrettable that the city will have to bear that cost. However, the incremental cost of a special election versus a regular election, $250,000, is just 4% of the city's existing 5.8 million investment in this project. I think opposing this project based on traffic concerns for schoolchildren is misguided. On the one hand, you have 60 small, one-bedroom apartments for seniors, which, based on the occupancy rates of Palo Alto Housing Corporation's other senior projects, would house 1.1 seniors per unit, or 66 seniors. On the other hand, subtracting the 12 units on the perimeter of the proposed project, you have the potential for 22 to 33 housing units, which would be probably occupied by working families and their children. So I don't really see how 66 seniors would generate more traffic than around 44 to 66 young adults and their teenage kids. And then finally, in terms of character, I think it is within character. You've got the four-story building in the shadow of an eight-story building, along with the two- and three-story apartments. The lot sizes, at least on Maybell, are within the range of existing lot houses within the neighborhood. I looked at 93 single-family homes on the plat map of the region. Implementing seven units on Maybell at 49, or 48 feet of lot width would only change the average lot width by about five inches. So in addition, in terms of two-story houses on Maybell, from El Camino to Climo, there's eight one-story houses and 12 two-story houses. So again, I think in terms of massing, it's within character. So I urge you to put it on the next special election ballot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Aparna, followed by Herb Brock.
Hello, my name is Aparna Anath Subramaniam. So according to a recent report by the National Coalition on Homelessness, the two leading causes of homelessness in the elderly are poverty and lack of affordable housing. Speaking to these factors, for every one unit of senior affordable housing in the country, there are nine elderly, sorry, nine elderly homeless people. Moreover, at least as of six months ago, all of the housing units in Palo Alto are either closed, or, sorry, the waiting lists are either closed, or they're over one year long. And senior citizens in Palo Alto earn 30 to 60% of the area median income, so affording housing is particularly challenging for them. Building additional affordable housing at Maybell clearly addresses these issues. Moreover, the health implications of homelessness are quite severe. The average age of death of a homeless man is 51, as opposed to 75 in the general population. Moreover, mortality is eight times higher, and the rates of most acute and chronic diseases are three to six times higher. This has specifically been linked to sleeping outside and more exposure to cold. Assault rates are also 40 to 60% among women and senior citizens who are unhoused. Just so you know, 2/3 of homeless elders in the country lost their housing because of a health issue. So clearly, projects like Maybell are critical for vulnerable populations like these. If cost is an issue, because it's been brought up so much tonight, I'd just like to point out that cost-effectiveness analyses and cost-benefit analyses have shown consistently that building affordable housing is actually cost-effective, and because the bulk of the costs that are saved by these kinds of projects are health costs, they're actually often cost-saving when they target vulnerable populations like senior citizens. So I guess all of this, just to say, I really support what you guys did in voting to approve the Maybell housing units, and I sincerely hope that you will put this on the ballot so that the citizens of Palo Alto can vote to do the right thing. Thank you. so that the citizens of Palo Alto can vote to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Herb Barak, to be followed by Jennifer Friling.
I urge you to repeal the ordinance for rezoning. Your alternative is to place the ordinance on some ballot. However, you don't have to make that decision this evening, because a motion to repeal, or a motion to place something on the ballot can be continued to a future meeting. The only reason you'd have to make a decision tonight is if you want to place it on this November's ballot. And the argument made for that is that somehow, if you don't do that, you will kill the funding. But the truth is, as you've seen with documented evidence, the project proponents have already killed the project for this funding cycle with their false application, supported by false statements from the city staff. But that will not kill the funding, because there's another funding cycle next year. The cost of an election is a bit misleading. For three of the elections, it is correct, hundreds of thousands of dollars. But for next year's general municipal election, anybody who's been paying attention knows there are going to be other ballot measures. So the true cost is the marginal cost of a six-page ballot statement, which is less than $40,000. The election dates mentioned by Ms. Gonzalez, she failed to note that for each and every one of them, they were either consolidated with a statewide, general or primary election, or with the general municipal election. None of them were a standalone special election with all the costs borne by Palo Alto. The, I think that's all you really need to know, except that this is an example of what's been happening since before the previous city manager has been hired, was hired. So it's not a new thing, but it takes a while for everybody to figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Friling, to be followed by Alice Smith. And Jennifer, you'll have 10 minutes, because you're speaking for five people.
Thank you. Great. Whoops. Good evening, council members. So I had provided some handouts, and so hopefully you got those. And they will substantiate what I'm about to say. So I'm very concerned about what appears to be some sort of deception on the state tax credit allocation committee. Two days before, the city council voted to rezone Maybell, a Palo Alto city official advised the state tax credit committee that the property was zoned PC for the Housing Corp's project on June 26, 2013. Yet, the PC ordinance had not yet been adopted by city council until two days later, on June 28. Even after the PC was adopted, the city knew that the ordinance wasn't effective until a month later, at the end of July. Yet, a month earlier, the clerk verified, the city, excuse me, verified PC zoning to the state tax credit committee in support of the Housing Corp's tax credit application. Adding to the deception on the state tax credit committee, the Housing Corp, under penalty of perjury, on July 1, 2013, advised that the land zoning approval was complete for the project, despite the fact that the PC ordinance was not in effect until the end of July. On June 3, a citizens group demanded that the city and the city council withdraw that, any letter verifying land zoning approval to the state tax credit committee, yet to date, no such retraction has been made to the committee. Compounding these deceptions is a June 18 letter from the city official to the Housing Corp, confirming that the city council approved a loan commitment of over $7.3 million for the project, which letter was provided along with Housing Corp's tax credit application to the state tax credit committee. During the Maybell proceedings, it was never disclosed that the city council approved a loan of over $7.3 million. The June 17 staff report on page 9 reveals a $5.8 million loan. Why did the city and Housing Corp represent to the state tax credit committee a different amount than what was approved by city council? Or when did city council allegedly approve a $7.3 million loan to the Housing Corp? Where are the minutes and documents? Was this a backdoor deal? If so, were there Brown Act violations in play? I ask the council to please follow one simple rule that the neighborhood has been asking, follow the rules of law and follow the rules of zoning.
Thank you. Alice Smith, to be followed by Rita Verhelle.
My name is Alice Smith. I live at 4284 Los Palos Circle. I'm a neighbor. I live in Green Acres 1. I'm directly affected. I've gone to many of the Palo Alto Housing Corporation's informational meetings, and many of the other hearings as well, which resulted in huge improvements to this project. I live in the Green Acres area, and am more concerned right now about Maybell traffic than I am about this project, because I think this project is excellent and should be voted on. I wholly supported your 9 to nothing vote. I suggest the city transportation department take an immediate mitigation action on Maybell, by making this a single, one-way street, with half the street dedicated to bicycles and pedestrians. There are often no sidewalks where these kids are going. If you make it going one way from west to east, or it's, I think it's west to east, you will be able to mitigate the transportation problem that is there for people making shortcuts. I don't care whether they're making shortcuts to get their kids to Gunn High School, or wherever they're going, on to Georgia. Get the cars off Maybell. That is a serious problem, and I believe that that's one of the major concerns of many of the people that are in Barron Park, or whatever area you want to call that area over there. So fix that problem. With the loss of Buena Vista, with your recent, and I think completely wrong, ruling about the car dwelling, the car dwellers who are homeless, you are making Palo Alto more and more just for the rich. We really have the value of a diversified community, and I think the Palo Alto Housing Corporation has done an outstanding job in that regard. I wholeheartedly support the fact that we do live in an economically diverse community. I'd like to retain it that way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Rita Verhelle, to be followed by John Elman.
Hi, I'm Rita Verhelle on Channing Avenue, so I'm not even near this project. First, I wanted to thank Mayor Scharf for voting against the ABIG housing density guidelines. I'm not against senior housing, but what I am against is the amazing rate of change that is occurring in Palo Alto. I think anytime the city council allows selective rezoning for any development, it puts all the residents in Palo Alto, who have paid a premium for their little plot of land, at risk for having an inappropriate development occur next door to them. The pace of development in Palo Alto in the last several years has been absolutely breathtaking. There is a 300,000-square-foot project proposed, which will then give the city a free police station. There is no free lunch. I believe that you should not put this on the ballot. I think you should rescind your vote, and open it up again for communication with all residents. This is not going to be the first referendum. I think in Palo Alto, there is an amazing amount of voter anger at what is perceived as a pro-growth council, and overreaching staff recommendations. I urge you to listen to the people who have come here, who probably each of which represent at least 100 voters, who are counting on those here tonight to do the heavy lifting. Thank you.
Thank you. John Elman, to be followed by Robert Smith.
Alice Smith acknowledged, but didn't mention, the problems caused by the closing of Rastodaro a couple of years ago. And I believe that much of the objection to this is caused by that whimsical decision based on data from the city traffic department, but no facts. The survey of the effect of cutting through Georgia and all the other streets, which I now have to do, never did for 45 years of living there, but the last couple of years, I've had to, I can't spend time trying to get out on Rastodaro. But there's no place for these people to go, the seniors. Secondly, I resent being accused of being against senior housing and so forth. How many of you can say you live within 300 yards of three major Palo Alto Housing Corporation projects, as I do, plus some smaller ones, below-market units in neighborhoods and so on? Your quasi-official newsletter, the Palo Alto Weekly even, in a editorial a couple of months back, acknowledged that you've made some errors in the order in which you've approved this thing, and moved it along. And to me, that was a terrific indictment, because they normally sport you down the line, as you know. Finally, we're not against the housing, obviously, but Climo was a hard one parking lot for the park. We only have one park over in that area of town, unlike all the parks in your areas of town. So this lot across the street could be a part of that park. But all those people piling out onto Rastodaro, out of that, hey, ooh, boy. Sorry.
Thank you.
A lot of times, I don't get that, like when I'm shaving or something.
Our final speaker is Robert Smith.
Good evening. I have not spoken on this issue before, because I only became aware of what was happening a few weeks ago. I guess I was a little slow. I think many people have not picked up on this yet. My initial thought was that probably this was another case of the neighbors simply objecting to something they didn't want there. But as I looked at the project, I saw that it really is out of scale, and that the issues have not been addressed about such things as traffic, and that the project should not have been, should not have been approved as it stands. It simply has too much housing on it. I then realized that the Pahc really didn't have enough money to do this. That's a key point here, because you gave them a lot of money to help them out, but that wasn't enough. So then, you proceeded to use the tremendous power of zoning, I feel, to create wealth for them. Wealth that is not created out of nothing, but is created out of the other people in the community. I think that you have gone too far with this, being too close to the project. You've kind of gone native with it, and you haven't paid the kind of attention that you should to the people. I don't live in that area, but to the kind of people who do live there, and who've raised concerns repeatedly, and I don't think are getting a good hearing, and have gotten a good hearing out of you. I urge you, if you can, to repeal this ordinance, and certainly not to go to extraordinary expenses and efforts to put it on this year's ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we return to council for questions, comments, and motions. Council member Berman.
After our discussion on the senior affordable housing project a couple of months ago, I was shouted by a resident, one who's here today, who told me that I need to work harder on being more compassionate in my comments. So I want to start off by congratulating the opponents of the senior affordable housing project on getting enough signatures to put a referendum on the ballot to try to overturn the council's unanimous decision. Some people have argued that if you put the referendum on a ballot on this date, it's going to help these folks, this side. Or if you put the referendum on a ballot on this date, it's going to help that side. And I've got to be honest with you guys. When I look at the issue of when we should put the referendum on the ballot, I don't see two sides. I see one group, and that one group is the broader Palo Alto community. It's our job as council members to try to do what we think is best for the entire city, not one side or another. I understand that some folks think that the city should wait until November of 2014, should wait an additional 12 months to put this issue on the ballot, because that would cost less money. But given the divisiveness and the vitriol that's been exhibited over the last few months, it's clear to me that an extra year of delay would be so much more costly to the fabric of our community. Some of the emails I've read, or the comments I've seen, that's not the Palo Alto that I know and love. So I want to encourage both parties to campaign vigorously and respectfully over the next couple of months, as I know you will, and then listen to and respect the will of the voters. If council's unanimous approval is overturned by the voters, then PAC will scrap the project and move forward without it. And if council's unanimous approval is upheld by the voters, I hope the opponents of the project will set aside their opposition so that we all can come together and move forward as one community. With that, I move that the city council adopt the, three-part motion. First part, adopt the resolution attached to the staff report, as attachment C, calling for a special election for November 5, 2013, on the referendum on the ordinance to rezone the property located at 567 to 595 Maybell Avenue, from R2 Low Density Residential and RM15 Multiple Family Residential, to PC Plan Community Overlay, to permit a 12 single-family unit and a 60-unit multifamily affordable rental development for seniors. Two, adopt the resolution attached to the staff report, as attachment D, repealing resolution number 9348, amending the comprehensive plan land use map that changed the land use designation for 567 to 595 Maybell Avenue, from multifamily residential to single-family residential. And three, authorize council members to use their official titles if they choose to sign on to ballot arguments.
I'll second that.
And that was seconded by Councilmember Ness. Do you wish to speak to your second councilman?
Oh, yeah, sorry. So I, you know, I spoke for 45 minutes a couple of months ago on why I think the project's a good project, and I'm not going to rehash that. And, you know, we've heard a lot of facts here today, that different sides will dispute the numbers, the impact on the streets, and that's what the campaign is for. And both sides are going to represent how they feel about the project, and the voters are going to get a chance to weigh in. And as I just said, I think it makes a lot more sense to have that discussion now, and to let voters across the city weigh in as soon as possible, than to have this issue fester over that land, over that neighborhood, over this community for 15 months. Doesn't make any sense to me. And so I think it's important for us to have this discussion. I hope it's a respectful discussion by everybody on all sides. And, you know, it's up to the voters at this point. Once the signatures were delivered, a referendum was going on the ballot, or we were repealing it. I'm not in favor of repealing it, and so I think let's have this discussion, and let's move forward.
Councilmember Ness, speak to your second.
Yes, thank you. Two or three things have come up tonight that I would like to address, and one of those is us giving money, as a council, to a group in the community. The money wasn't given, the money is loaned. And while that is somewhat unusual, there has been, as long as I've lived here, a commitment to senior housing, to affordable housing. And throughout Palo Alto, there are affordable housing projects, many of which you probably don't even notice. One that I think is always off to the side is Webster Wood. Many of you are familiar with that, and most people are not even aware that that is a low-cost housing project. It allows people to live in our community that would not be able to live otherwise. And someone in the audience spoke to that earlier, and said how proud they are to be in a community that does this kind of provision. Mr. Jagoda even spoke to that tonight, and said he is one of those who might qualify for this kind of housing. It makes a big difference in your community if you can have low-cost senior housing. People will not have to leave your community. As far as how we support it, that is somewhat unusual. But to loan something, like, in this case, money, in order case, money, in order to accomplish a good deed is difficult when it's recharacterized. While this is a planned community, a PC, the other PCs that you've referenced tonight also troubled those of us who were running last fall. In particular, Mark and I often discuss that because the PCs that you've referenced have been disturbing. And so I can see why this particular PC might be disturbing as well. I can only say for me, the balance in this is that to provide 60 units for seniors who are low-income in our community, I think has great value. And I think this is the kind of community that values just that type of housing. As far as when this election will take place, you know, you look at this chart, which is in front of you. You can see it will cost more to have the special election. But I would again agree with Councilmember Berman. You begin to tear a town apart. We don't want to tear the town apart. Even this short a campaign is going to be difficult and divisive. But I think, given that the referendum exists and we must follow through on that, it's important to have this truly sooner rather than later. So I support the motion tonight. I hope we will have the votes to go forward with that. This has been arduous, and I appreciate Councilmember Berman's moving forward with it.
Councilmember Price.
Yes, thank you. I may need to make a friendly amendment, but I wanted to read the last portion of the motion in a moment. Just to make some comments, I will wholeheartedly be supporting the motion as stated. I feel very, very strongly that as city council members and as community members, we need to keep our eye on what is the broader social good and what are our responsibilities in our community to address the many needs that we have. And this is particularly fresh for me right now because of our very intense and very challenging discussions about homelessness. And frankly, in those discussions and in the evolution of this project, you cannot, in my opinion, it's abundantly clear that the lack of affordable housing is one part of the spectrum as it relates to the issues of homelessness in our community. We have a responsibility to do something about this. This is a very, very well-designed project. It has improved in many, many ways since it was originally proposed. And as many of you know, I live in Barron Park. I'm like 1,400 feet or 1,600 feet from this property. I look forward to this proposed development, the single-family units and the 60 affordable housing units. The site plan has been revised. We're taking off driveways from Maybell, many of the issues that have been discussed very eloquently by both sides of this debate. But again, I feel so strongly about the need for affordable housing, and this project develops capacity that we don't have. As has been stated before, in many cases, affordable housing would not happen if we didn't have the option of planned community zoning. It is not an aberration or a strange technique. Planned community zoning is a very standard practice in general plans all over the country and in communities that have comprehensive plans. It's used in a very deliberate way. The issue of extending the debate, I think, would not be helpful. It would be divisive, as has been noted. What concerns me is the more and the more, the more difficult and the more intense this discussion begins, the more Palo Alto Housing Corporation, the more affordable housing advocates and others are pulled away from their mission and purpose, which is to provide affordable housing. And the more this goes and the more exacerbated this becomes and the more difficult and challenging it becomes, and let's say honestly right now, it's very difficult right now, and it will continue to be very challenging. The mission and purpose is being compromised. Let's see, a couple of other points. I concur with the points of my colleagues. And again, the connection with homelessness is very, very clear. We need a variety of housing types. We need a variety of housing products, and this is one of them. And I think we should move forward in a deliberate manner. Many conversations were had with the community for many, 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 many months, and offers were made to have more conversations in the last three weeks. Offers made by Palo Alto Housing and the city has talked to different people, and we've all been engaged in a lot of communication, but those offers were not taken up by some of the opponents of the project. So I look forward to this project moving ahead. I think our first step is the special election. It's very painful to have to pay this kind of money in order to do this. I do think it's necessary. I think the voters across all of Palo Alto have a right and a responsibility to weigh in and to vote. And I really appreciate all the comments that we've received and all the comments at public hearings. Honestly, this has been extremely intense, and it will continue to be so. So I am very pleased to support this motion. And point three, good. I wanted to make sure that we have the authorization to sign using our titles as city council members if we so choose to do so. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, I wonder if I could start with two legal questions. I think a number of people have brought up tonight the case of the June 26 letter, which was sent saying that approval had been passed, which actually was not done for several days. Could I have a comment on whether, what the situation is?
Kara Silver, Senior Assistant City Attorney. I haven't seen the particular letter that was being referred to. I can tell you that the city has been in contact with the Tax Credit Association, TCAC, and that TCAC is well-aware that the zoning did not go into effect right away, that there was a 30-day hold period. They are well-aware of the fact that two referendums have qualified for the ballot, and they're also aware that a sequel lawsuit has been filed. And as of just today, an official has called somebody from the planning department to verify the current status of the application, and that information was relayed by the city planning department to TCAC.
Yeah, I think it might be helpful if there was a written statement given to the council as to the status of the issues raised in that letter, that the TCC is aware, we have the communications, we have copy of our notes to them. I think that would be helpful. The second legal question I have is the second part of the motion rescinds the change in the PC law. So we are continuing with the change in the zoning code, but not the PC, not the comp plan. Now, I heard several people say tonight that the commitment for the senior housing is in perpetuity. I'm concerned with the L-shaped commercial sale, whether in perpetuity carries over to that as well? Or is there the possibility that in one year, five years, 10 years, an owner can say, gee, there's a conflict between the zoning code and the comp plan? Let me make an appeal to change my single-family home.
Thank you, Councilmember Schmidt. The zoning, the PC zoning ordinance that was approved on second reading has a specific provision addressing that issue. And it provides that the PC district is an overlay and that if the property owner elects to develop the property as a senior citizen housing complex, once that election is made, the PC zone essentially drops down and it supersedes the underlying zoning. So the protection in the L-shaped parcels that were created with the PC zone, which eliminated the third story on some of the residences and provided larger setbacks and all of those safeguards to address the compatibility issues raised by the neighborhood, would be in the ordinance and would supersede any sale.
So it would be right to say that if that, those changes would be in perpetuity, like the senior housing?
Well, I don't know that it would be in perpetuity. You could always ask for, the developer could always ask for a zone change, and the council, you know, could or could not grant that zone change.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to say in general that over the last three, four months, we've gone through, you know, quite a process, and I think the proposed senior housing is an asset, will be an asset to the city. Important commitment of a city to diversity in a place where it would fit. I think the L-shaped zoning along Clemo and Maybell raises issues of the impact of zoning on the neighbors, the neighborhood. And I think the traffic issue has been discussed and remains an issue. And I think it is valid that neighbors bring these issues up. They have, through petitions, asked for an election, and I think it is appropriate to move ahead on the PC change referendum. One person commented that there are better ways to spend money, and I think when there's an issue like this, well-defined before the city, that there's no better way of spending public money than asking the public what they want in this. So I support moving ahead on the referendum.
Council Vice Mayor Shepherd.
Thank you. And I just want to address one quick thing. I know it seems like we're having an unusual Thursday evening meeting, but for me, I've been thinking about this for months, realizing that there was going to be a referendum shortly after our vote, knowing that it was getting organized. Then I'm going, trying to go back to some of my democratic principles about what do you do with a referendum. I know that the voters probably don't realize that it costs money to run ballots. We do because we had to put the firefighters initiative on the ballot back in 2010 when we got so many signatures. So many signatures that those signatures themselves didn't even vote yes on the initiative that they wanted. There were more, there were fewer voting yes, so we actually had fewer yes votes for the firefighters than we had people carrying the petitions, submitting it to the voters. And that was interesting to me. I'm very respectful of elections and the democratic process. I believe in public schools. I believe in public libraries. I believe in public space. And so I think that the ballot box is a public place, and the voters change between now and a year from now. And I do know that, I'm not a lawyer, but I do know that most of the rights that we have in this country are based on the rule of law over land and your ownership of that land and your rights that go along with the ownership of that land. Back to when people started fencing land away from the Indians and saying that I've been proved to something, and so I have a right to have a title to it. And they've emerged throughout the years. So I will be supporting this initiative to put this on the ballot. It's going to cost us money, and I can't explain it. I can't explain it away, except for the fact that we don't have council elections this year so that we could save money and put it on during an even-year process when there's more initiatives on the ballot. But that means that these Novembers, these odd-year November ballots are vacant of a traditional ballot for Palo Alto. So I think back in the days of the firefighters and then the initiative for 800 High Street, any November election would not have been considered a special election. It would have been either midterms or council elections or presidential. So then it gets back to the puzzle that I've had with trying to figure out the passion of the neighborhood community and the interest that I've been emailed so many times, please keep current zoning. And the miss, and what that means to me. So for what that means to me is back in 1978, the way I understand it, this was zoned multiplex, R15 and R2. It's been clearly explained to me as a city council member that the maximum build on this property could be 37 units if they don't do a housing density bonus and do BMR units. And then they have to give the money to the city of Palo Alto, somewhere around 37, 38 units. I'm trying to look at Aaron here.
Thirty-four would be the...
Thirty-four, okay. Well, then my calculations here are wrong then because what I wanted to try to figure out is how many bedrooms that would bring to this community. Because the puzzle that I saw the housing corps have... Pardon?
Aaron has that.
Well, I have it too. I've done it on my smartphone. The puzzle that the housing corps had was the fact that they needed the unit count-up, but they didn't need the bedrooms. And that's something that council has an interest in because, you see, the city, the school board has written us letters asking us to be very careful as to how we zone for residences here in Palo Alto. And we've been working hard with the Planning and Transportation Commission to try to figure out how to expand the concept of a unit so that we wouldn't have real large units for residencies here in Palo Alto because of the ABAG regulations and the fact that they're very punitive to the city of Palo Alto. They were very punitive to Menlo Park last year when they got sued by agencies and they had a very troubled experience getting in two periods of ABAG units. And I, so I hope that the community starts to follow this dilemma that council ends up with. So we talked about mini-units, 400-square-feet, 600-square-feet units, thinking that it would attract seniors or singles, but not families with children because we know that we don't, we can't invent property for the schools either. So this went through a process that has gotten revised since the Alma Plaza project, which is dreadful. That used to be my home turf when I first moved here in Palo Alto. I would go down to the Chevron Station, fill up with gas, go to the Lucky Store, feed my family with four children. It was easy. And yet, we have a development there that I've always been told before it was even built out that nobody was going to like. And so we expanded our process, and we followed that expansion of process. As a matter of fact, when I look through the minutes, I see Mr. Borak commenting about the process and to stay with the process, which we did. I look at the Plan and Transportation Commission meeting, first meeting they had in February of this year, and that was September of 2012. So February of this year, I see two people talking at that one. Mr. Moss is one of them, saying he thinks that the units for the housing on the L is a little high. Maybe take off three units and put 12 houses there. And please don't do a PC zone because that's too hard for the city to figure out what public benefits are. So ask, the housing corps should ask for R40 as they're rezoning. Now, of course, if we gave them R40, this could be a much denser project, obviously. And we couldn't tie the senior housing component of that entitlement onto the project. That's what the PC ordinance does. So as a matter of fact, at the city council meeting, when we did the pre-application, which is what we normally do when somebody wants to do more zoning, we are doing pre-application so that all of us could talk publicly about what we think is right or wrong about somebody's proposal. And I was really glad. I love listening to people who came out of Plan and Transportation. So Pat Burt, council member over here, noticed that all the driveways along Maybell would really cause a headache with traffic, so he asked them to redirect those driveways to the parking lot of the housing, of the senior project. to the parking lot of the housing, of the senior project. So, what I come up with is I come up with about 104 bedrooms out of this. I put three bedrooms on Clemo for those five houses and I put four bedrooms on the Maybell site. We've deepened the lots, which is what I heard the community saying that they wanted in this neighborhood. They did not want the row housing that we've seen in other areas of this community and I don't want to see that row housing either. If that's what we passed, then I'm ashamed of myself. But the way I understand it is we have not passed, this PC will not deliver row housing on this site. And yet, in one of my email correspondence just yesterday with one of the community members, he says, he says, "But, you know Nancy, you just don't get it. A housing developer might do single-family housing on this site." And he's right. He could. But this is the landowner right here. The Palo Alto Housing Corps controls the ownership of that land right now. The city council does not. We have a loan, but we don't control the actions that happen on this particular site. So, I have to sit here and navigate, taking away three houses that we, that council did, removing the third floor on the Maybell site, deepening the lots. I'm very grateful for the colleagues, my colleagues that did this. And I actually thought, and I know that the mayor worked hard over the weekend, and yet somehow, with this very public process, we still have been accused of ramming this through. I think that, what's sad for me is there's no common understanding. So, if I had understood that what current zoning meant, meant keeping the orchard or doing single-family only, that's a conversation that maybe should have been had back in 1978 or sometime between 1978 and before, somebody bought the orchard from the owner of the orchard. And I think it's going to be a first-generation build here, except for those four houses that are there. And so, I don't feel rushed about this. I wish that we had a better understanding so that we could share in that understanding. I see that possibly with 34 houses, how many bedrooms would we have with 34 houses? At the low, let's do three bedrooms, not four bedrooms each. I know that people have been doing four bedrooms because they want to maximize their rental or their sale capability. So, how many bedrooms do we get if we send this back out to the market if all fails on this project?
With, thank you Vice Mayor Shepherd. So, I had done a calculation with the three and a half bedroom average.
Okay.
And that came out for the proposed, for the proposed development came out with 103, or the approved development, 103 bedrooms. If you had a standard development, not including the density bonus, you would have about 119 bedrooms.
Okay.
And if you had one with the density bonus, so if they got the max density bonus, got up to 46 units, you would have up to 161 bedrooms.
Okay. Thank you. And I did have a little higher one, but I was just doing a multiplication of four bedrooms because I know that that's what people are building. And I have to say that most people will email me on any project and tell me that, "Don't let so-and-so do something because they'll build it out to the max." Here, I'm hearing that if it goes back to market, that they won't build it out to the max because that would be unwise and not financially prudent for a developer and I can't divine that. So, what we have here is a project with a landowner who is supporting some of the goals independent of what council wants with senior housing, mini-units, one bedroom, trying to keep the school district happy so that they don't get exploding too fast with their students because that's what I hear all the time. It's one of the reasons why we have the Regional Housing Allocation Committee with school board members on it so that everybody can have a shared and common understanding of the difficulty moving forward with some of these projects and developments. And I think I've spoken to my reasons for why I want to see this vote in this November. I think that when people sign an initiative, they want to vote on it. That's why you sign initiatives. That's why you carry initiatives. It's not used as a bargaining chip to see, "Let's negotiate again." I don't know how to negotiate out of this one with the confidence that, I thought I had some confidence before when we passed this, that we had some clear understanding of what the concerns and issues were here. And so, I am very sad to have to come here tonight and make these kinds of decisions. It's not a good night for me on city council. Thank you.
Councilmember Holman.
I think perhaps there's a little bit of clarification that might be helpful. The length of term of the senior housing being affordable senior housing and retention of that, besides the PC zone and that requirement that the zoning does require, is it not also a requirement of the funding sources for an affordable housing developer that that housing stay in that exact use?
Thank you, Councilmember Holman. There are several safeguards in this entire transaction regarding affordability covenants. There is, the city would place a regulatory covenant on the land via its loan and the, some of the other housing, or housing loan providers also have existing affordability covenants that run with the property. And then you have, of course, the PC zoning as well. And then I think, yes, the tax credit funding probably also has an affordability requirement.
Thank you for that clarification. I think it's an important thing that we keep our sights on as we discuss this project. I would say that there are too many projects in this community that have had negative impacts on the community. They've had traffic impacts, parking impacts, there's been incompatible design, scale, mass on a number of projects. Quite honestly, there have been a number of projects that I've voted against over the years where I would have welcomed a referendum on any number of them. This, however, is not one of those projects for a variety of reasons. Many of them have been stated by colleagues. It delivers the 60 units of affordable housing. I think the changes that the council made when this came to us in June, I think, helped make this a compatible project. As one of the speakers, I don't remember who it was, said that the four-story portion of this project is in the shadow of an eight-story building and the neighborhood is buffered from that part of the project by the single-family transitional housing along Clemo and Maybell. Just the other night, we had at this Monday, in between Monday and now, we had another city council meeting last night, so it's been a busy week. But just Monday night, we had long discussion in these very chambers about the need for housing, the underserved and the unhoused. This project helps solve at least part of that problem. It doesn't solve it all. There are other issues. Not everyone who is living on our streets is from Palo Alto. This housing project gives preferential access to Palo Alto residents and those who work in Palo Alto. The only way to deliver a project through that is through a combination of funding sources, including from the city. It's why we impose impact fees on applicants to be able to build up a funding source for such projects. So, I think this, this does help that, help us move along in trying to help at least solve a portion of that. I won't belabor this. Other colleagues have said and staff has indicated as well that if this project should happen to go away, the number of bedrooms, which I think is one of the biggest issues, the number of bedrooms that could be developed on this site is going to have a much bigger impact than this project will, both in terms of school impacts and traffic impacts. And not for us to address tonight, but we do need to address the traffic issues on Maybell. Again, that's not before us tonight, but that is something that needs to happen. And one of the things I really want to make a point about this evening is there will be campaigns. We can tell by the dialogue that's happened heretofore that this is an impassioned argument on both sides, that there's a good amount of misinformation and a lot of good information out there. My plea is that I call on each of the people who are going to be involved in this campaign and who are in these campaigns and who have already been making statements, that you make informed statements, that you get educated and that the statements that you make are informed and accurate. And that's to a person and to an organization, that we be respectful of each other and that we be respectful of the democratic process and people's right to have their own views. We need to focus on the issues and campaigns should never get personal. And one of the things that I think is interesting about political campaigns is you never know when the person that you are defaming one day is going to be your colleague on another campaign. So, don't ever forget that because we are, none of us singly faceted. Healthy debate is just that. It requires personal and organizational responsibility to move forward in the democratic process. So, that I think is my last comment. I just hope that we will have progress that will come from this, that some issues will get focused on to help us all move forward as a community. There are issues that this council and the city does need to address as to PC zoning and all the, some of the other issues that has caused me as a council member to vote against a number of projects. That's my personal view, but I hope we can help delineate some of those issues and focus on them and I will be supporting the motion.
Councilmember Burt.
Well, first, I agree with many of the comments made by my colleagues. So, I'll just add a few. When we've heard comments from members of the public about their objections, they've kind of been a wide range of objections depending on who was speaking. But really, I, for me, I've, I think that the two most prevalent ones have been about the housing on Maybell and the PC process itself. So, just to speak to the, first, the housing on Maybell, as colleagues have stated, it's currently R-2 and that means that eight units could be built on Maybell under existing zoning. And when this came to the council, there, it came forward with nine units proposed on Maybell, three stories tall, short setbacks in front and narrow setbacks from building to building. Fortunately, we had already eliminated the driveways that, there are currently four driveways that backed cars out from Maybell on, or from the single-family homes onto Maybell. There could have been eight driveways and instead we have none. But what the council did was the council agreed with those criticisms that we heard from a lot of the community. And we reduced the number of homes on Maybell from nine to seven, so it's now fewer than existing zoning. And to remind people that are criticizing the PC, this is fewer than existing zoning on Maybell. The houses are now two stories. They're set back at normal distances from the street. They're 10 feet setbacks from each other. There are no driveways. Clearly, in my mind, the housing on Maybell is lower impact and a better design than what we would get under existing zoning. Then we have the balance of the question on the PC process and a number of colleagues have already pointed out this, but basically, in addition to what they've said, under the existing PC zoning, not only would you have more bedrooms, but you'd have, these would be larger units and ultimately, larger square footage of development, which we talk about in terms of floor area ratio. It's basically, how big of a development would the RM-15 development be? And where would it go? Because under existing zoning, it would go all the way out on Clemo. It's not required to be backed and tucked up against the TAM building at eight stories. It would extend that entire area out to Clemo. So, under the existing zoning, in RM-15, you'd have a bigger development, fewer units, but these are 600-square-foot units that are being proposed for seniors versus an additional, versus in that zone, I think it would be eight, sorry, doing the math, something like 30-something family units versus 60 small senior units. And those 30-something family units would be more square footage, bigger mass and scale, extending all the way to Clemo. So, Councilmember Holman had cited a number of concerns she has had in the past over PC projects in the city and I think she's probably been one of the strongest critics of overdone PCs that we've had in recent years. And we also have, even before us, in proposals, some PCs that I think a number of us disagree with the proposal, they haven't gone through the system yet. But this is not an example of what's wrong with PCs. This project actually is resulting in a project with less density and less impacts than existing zoning. That's aside from whatever intrinsic public benefit there is for the affordable senior housing. Just the project itself has less mass and scale, is smaller and fewer impacts than existing zoning. And I'm just exacerbated by the number of arguments that I keep hearing for people saying, "Give me the existing zoning, it's so much less impactful." It just is not what is accurate. And so, in any event, I, in fact, I think a lot of the requests that have been made about, "Well, just keep it the way it is," that means that what you're requesting is a downzoning. And if people want to say, "We want the city to downzone this to what it is," then that would be an honest argument. But to say we want the existing, it built to the existing zoning and then to say that a developer wouldn't build out to their allowable rights under existing zoning and maximize their profit, we all know that they would and they have certain rights to do so with only limited constraints that we would have on the city on this. And so, I just want to reiterate those points. I think that people are frustrated by being late to appreciate what was being proposed in their neighborhood and maybe this process could have been better in those ways, but from a design standpoint, this project is better than what could be built under the existing zoning.
Councilmember Klein.
Well, first, let me congratulate Councilmember Berman for introducing this in a very succinct, forcible manner and I really appreciated that he set the table for us to move this along. And I'm going to try not to repeat the statements that I made in support of this project at the last meeting when we had this back in June. I was going to say a lot of the things that Councilmember Burt had to say about the fact that the PC zoning has worked here to produce a result if it goes through, that protects the neighborhood better than the existing zoning. And he went into great detail and I agree everything he said about the math and how that works out, but it can't apparently be said often enough. The PC zone here has produced a project, will produce a project, that is less dense, less impactful and protects the neighborhood better than the existing zoning. And has a public good. And, not in place of or anything else, and in addition to. It's hard for me to understand why the neighborhood objects, but there it is and we respect the process. I know that, amazing as it may be, that a lot of people watch us on television. And if there are people out there tonight who are listening, I highly recommend if they want to see and read sort of an impartial statement about what the facts are here, that they go online and read the frequently asked questions, the FAQs that the planning staff has produced. They've revised it from time to time, just as late as, I guess, this week. And it's online. The chief author is our acting planning director, Akman, and I want to say that he is impartial. This isn't his... This isn't his project. It's not his job to be an advocate one way or another. He's only been with the city for what, a year and a half now?
Probably a year.
He seems like it.
Yeah. He came to us as a very experienced planner. He was formerly the planning director of San Bruno and I think you can rely on him. And I thus urge people who want to learn more about this to read the FAQs that he and his staff have produced. I do want to talk about one thing that perhaps others haven't treated and that is, in setting the election here for November, which I thoroughly agree with, there's a time value of money issue here as to why I couldn't agree to postpone this to November 2014. And it's not the time value of money of the housing corporation. It's the time value to our community. We don't, I think, we don't want to have decisions such as this in limbo. One way or another, this piece of property is going to be developed. And if it's going to be, if the, if the voters, as I believe they will, support the unanimous action of the council and let this project go forward, I think we want it to go forward. Not in, we want it to go forward as, as quickly as possible if the voters agree. We don't want it to be delayed for still another year. If the voters turn it down, then we're going to have some other use and we might as well get on with that as well and not put that off for another year. So there's a time value to the community here that I think that we need to honor. Also, I, I just can't conceive of the idea that once the voters have spoken and put this to the ballot, that we should delay, delay it for really 15 months. That doesn't seem to me to be in further instance of democratic process. We have an argument that's ongoing between those who favor this project and those that don't. Let's have the debate, reach a decision and move on. I think that's the, the, the best way for us to go. So with those thoughts in mind and not wanting to repeat the many, many arguments that we've had and all of us have spoken to, I would gladly support the motion.
So, I got to negotiate with the neighbors. I find this situation really puzzling in some ways. When I talked with the neighbors about this, what I heard over and over again is, "We're actually fine with 60 units of senior housing. We would rather have eight units rather than the 15 that was proposed." We went to 12. The difference between eight and 12, it's really not that much. It's not going to make a difference. But even if it did make a difference, the existing zoning is, I think most of my colleagues have pointed out, and I, I wrote down some phrases that some of our colleagues said, is that the PC zone that we did is less dense and less impactful and more of a public good. I thought that was summing it up. And I have a small confession to make. When I first heard about this project and I understood how upset the neighbors were, I actually was leaning against, voting against this project. I strongly believe that we need to protect the neighborhoods, that we need to think about what the neighborhoods want and we need to support the quality of life in the neighborhoods. But once I realized that this project makes the quality of the life in the neighborhoods better as opposed to what will be developed there. Now, if the neighbors came forward with a credible plan, a viable plan to create an orchard that would stay there in perpetuity, I actually might consider that. But there is no way at 15 some million dollars, with no one stepping up, that that's going to happen. We couldn't as a city downzone to orchard, that would be a taking. There is no orchard zoning. So unless someone's willing to pay for this property, you can't have it as an orchard. And if we could, I mean, if we could do something that was done like at Gamble Garden, where you had an heritage orchard in the neighborhood, I actually would support that if that was something we could do. I mean, I think that would be a fair option. But it's not on the table and it's not a possibility. So, what is on the table? Existing zoning. And I think as every council member believes up here, the existing zoning is more impactful on the neighborhood. Being more impactful on the neighborhood, it will actually reduce the quality of life, the existing zoning. So I really don't get why the neighbors want the existing zoning. It, it makes absolutely no sense to me frankly. So, my concern is, is that if you actually get what you want, it will be worse for the neighborhood. As Councilmembers Burt pointed out, you won't get the thoughtful approach to how to make the streetscape look in conformance with the neighborhood. You will get something that is much more dense with driveways right there or you'll get some sort of a denser condominium project, small lot, single-family. What I heard from the neighbors when we talked through, through that day, that Saturday, is they want it to look like a single-family neighborhood. And we've done that on Clemo and Maybell. It looks like that. So I just don't get it. So, you know, when you go to vote on this, think about what the neighborhood would look like under the existing zoning. I mean, I actually would have completely got it if someone had have come forward with an initiative to zone this to R1. I mean, at least I would understand it, it makes sense to me. The current approach makes no sense to me. Now, the other thing I think we need to talk about, which no one's mentioned, is some of the neighbors have formed a nonprofit, it's unclear who they are, and filed a sequel lawsuit. The lawsuit, in my estimation, seems frivolous. And it seems to undercut the democratic process in many ways. We're going to go to a vote of the city and we're going to decide this based on what people want. And I would ask those people who filed that lawsuit, "Do you really want everyone spending money on this? You should go ahead and dismiss it frankly and let the people of Palo Alto decide what they want." And if the people of Palo Alto want this project and vote for it, and I actually believe as the facts come to light and people think about it and think, "What will the alternative look like?" And they start to grapple with that, that it's not going to be an orchard, that it's going to be developed one way or the other, and this current project is far less impactful. I don't think that can be said enough from up here. And I think you have to think about it. I think Councilmember Burt said it. You know, you have Councilmember Holman's impassioned plea for this project. You know, Councilmember Holman is not known for her, you know, support of the PC process, the development, you know. So, when every council member up here, and we all have different views on things, are unanimous in believing that this is, and I'll say it again, is less impactful on the neighborhood. Every citizen in Palo Alto should support this. And I, you know, we've got it on the referendum, you can't take the signatures back anyway. It's going on the ballot. But think about what the real outcome of this is and what the impact on people's lives will be if this project does not go forward and the existing zoning goes forward. Anyway, thank you very much. Seeing no further lights, let's vote on the board. And that passes unanimously. So thank you all for coming tonight and speaking. And I know this, you know, rises a lot of passions in people.
Excuse me, could I say something, Mayor Shar? Now that this item is moving forward to the November 213 election, there is argument deadlines. The direct argument is due next Friday, August 16th. Although this is a 9:80 Friday, I will be in with my staff in the council conference room right next door to accept the arguments.
So Donna, will anyone have trouble getting up the elevators on the morning?
No, I'll make sure of that.
Okay.
And then the rebuttals are due the following Friday, the 23rd, and that would be up in my office because we'd be open on the seventh floor. And I have the forms here if anybody would like to take the forms to fill out.
Thank you. And now we'll move to council comments, questions if there are any.
I'm tired of you guys.
Yes. Seeing none, the meeting's adjourned.